That means for our staff is that we're going to create documents and really stay with milestones and when we're going to present things to council and how we're going to do this, and we're calling them our strategic goals. And our staff will take these goals and be able to give you a quarterly update on each of these goals. And so we want to make this where we take this very seriously as the direction of the council, and as long as y'all are okay with what these goals are, and of course, if you want to tweak and help us do that, we can do that through that strategic goal process. And I'll later, once we get all of our documents together, I'll show you what that looks like, and we want you to be able to ask at any time, where does this project stand? So, for example, you know, how are we fostering city-county rural water district relationships? For example, I hope that in my weekly updates, I'm able to give to you how we do that, and that may not be an exact copy of a piece of paper that says this is exactly what we're doing, but we want to be able that we need all of these goals in fiscal year 15. Now, some of these, we've already started, to be real frank. These are things that we do in operations, but we want to make sure that we're achieving your goals in fiscal year 15. So if these are your goals and you're okay with this, then we're going to move forward and get these things done for you.
Any questions, discussion on the council goals? Everybody's had a chance to see it?
No, I liked what that meeting format.
Any questions, concerns? All right, we'll leave it as it goes. Number four, discussion regarding proposed F-Bond 15 budget.
We'll let Kim take this one away.
Take it away. From the August 5 meeting, we made a few changes to the budget that we shared on August 5, and so I went to, I put together just a few, a few brief bullet points of what we did change. You know, we've been talking about getting ready for the Liberty Lake, the Lake Retail Store, and so we didn't have a line item for the retail or the revenue coming in, just for the retail store. So it's in your package. I'm sorry. And so we created revenue line item, and we also created expenditure line item to offset each other. We, we did increase just because of where we're at. We're over 25,000 this year in the Lake D's apartments, and that's without, you know, really someone being out there. That's just honor box. And so we would have increased that to 50,000.
And it may on the honor box, something that y'all may not know, that I think a council should know. For example, when we open up the envelopes at the honor box, many of those envelopes are actually empty, and people take the envelope, pretend they put money in it, and then set it in there. What the retail store allows us to have is an attendant on duty, so, because sometimes our visitors may not be as honorable as the honor box might be, but we're, we're seeing a significant increase in revenues even with the honor box.
We also, we moved one employee from police operations and moved over to police and administration, and that was about, I mean, and we based that off of a, you know, just a lieutenant salary and what that would, the rollups and everything would be. So there was a little bit of an increase there, and, but we also, at the same time, reduced the overall employee health insurance with the exact numbers that we've been going by. First, we went with 10% or 25%, then we went to 10%, then we dropped it down to the exact number, which we saw a little bit of a savings, and every penny counts. And we also, when we made that change, it also reduced the transfers from general fund to airport and fire. We increased the water treatment plant chemicals, and this was the suggestion by the mayor that, you know, every year it does, they, they do tend to go up, and so we increased that line item for what, water treatment plant and water treatment plant. We also adjusted the water revenue for the town coil. We had it set a little bit higher than, than what we're, what we're proposing tonight. And we also increased the water revenue based on the new rates that's going to go in October 31st, and we renamed the line item to reflect what it's actually called instead of what we had originally called it. So those are the changes that we've made so far.
No, I'm not putting you on the spot, but do you happen to have in that kind of what the changes are by any chance? If you don't, that's okay, but some of them wash.
Yeah, a lot of those just...
A lot of those, if they did, they looked like they were pretty close.
If we, just for instance, on the police, the police department.
Right.
We were able to...
It looks like it all washed on that reduction of...
We did.
Okay. Hey, well, that's a good job.
The, you know, the Lake Retail Store, that was a wash. The chemicals was pretty much a wash with the increase in the water revenue.
Right. No, I think that's great.
Thank you.
Can you indulge on the renamed the line item to reflect sewer line extension?
Yes, it's, yeah. It is, because actually, our accounting software, it's actually called line extensions, but for this, since this is a working document, and so we're all, we all understand what that is for.
Okay.
We called it a sewer line extension, because it's really what it is. And originally, we...
Is that the, could you have it here under capital projects, the sewer, CDBD grant, the sewer extension?
Uh huh.
The million dollars?
It is.
Is that supposed to be renamed? No?
Let me get caught up.
Okay.
Department 54.
Yeah, it's an expenditure line item. You're looking at the grant, you're looking at another one.
Oh, I didn't see, I didn't see anything else.
Where are you looking at?
I'm looking at capital projects.
Are you under Department 54?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Is that right? Is that where we're supposed to be?
Well, there's two of them.
You've got a revenue and an expenditure, so you're probably looking at revenues.
I'm under revenue.
That one is called sewer extension. We had it named as water on the expenditure, but it's not, it's sewer.
Yeah.
So yours is correct that you're holding.
Okay, okay. So this is revenue?
Which is a, which we hope to be a grant, maybe.
Okay, because you've got a grant on it.
We'll apply for it, and then your expenditure is...
We don't have the grant yet, but it is something...
You just placeholder.
Okay, and then you have a, right below that, sewer road development fee, that's another revenue?
It is, and it is something that Cody is hoping, so, so the city doesn't have to pay that part. Cody, it's, that's something that economic development is working on, all grants.
These are all grants?
It would be from the developer, I guess.
Department Cars.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Department 54 is grants.
Well, revenues.
Or revenues.
Okay.
And what about 54, 55?
And is your expenditure side?
It shows, it shows a million five hundred. So is that what we're saying, we're just expending that grant money if it comes? So that's not money that the city has?
Right.
That's money that...
In other words, the sewer project would not happen unless it is grant and development funded. In other words, you don't, you're not putting money in your budget to pay for that.
Okay, so this 54, 55, where you have the line extensions, that's actually a combination of both of these, all?
Yes.
Because what, that's in rural water district, I want to be clear on that.
Okay, I, sorry, I have more questions.
Okay.
As I open it through. On the C-MON fund, apartment, or number 55.
55.
On the capital outlay, and you've got your revenue in, you have all your expenditures on here, the capital outlay where it shows sanitary sewer line, the rehab, because the rest of the money is going in to pay on debt service.
Right.
So is that going to be for, you know, how many miles, or what do we have left on that project, and how much will that do?
We are, that's phase two of this, and so for every year here on out, we have to put in that amount of money every year, and you might be able to explain exactly what...
As part of the consent order that we...
Yeah, I figured it was. So this is part of what DQ wanted us to do?
Exactly.
And they, is this the amount that we have to do?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Should clarify, made us do.
Yes.
Right, right. Okay. But as long as we're okay with doing what we're supposed to do, then...
Yes.
We have one more audit to do for them.
Okay.
When, I got to ask that question, when you say audit, they're coming through just the, the part we've already done, or they looking at other stuff?
No, we have an audit that we have to give showing them that we have done certain things and the cost of those things, so that it coincides with their mandates.
So basically, all the revenue that comes in off that C-MON, either, whatever's not going to the loan payments is going to repair, infrastructure.
Right, we don't revenue above that.
Right, it's all spending. Okay. Thank you for answering that question. Let's see, another question I had, maybe I already asked you that. On the, back to the department number 54, on the utility billing user fee, there was a proposed 235,000 left for the roads.
Is that a road revenue?
And that will be, okay.
Yep. So 425 on everybody's bill. Yield's that much money.
Well, she's looking, I got one. 2021-00-6382, Santa Fe easement. What is that? Santa Fe sewer easement?
Yeah, it's a, it's a yearly, we pay it yearly, and it goes up just a little bit each year by like 2 or 3%.
And...
We pay at the end of the year.
What's it for, what's it due? I mean, I don't understand it.
It's a sewer line on their easement, Santa Fe's easement.
Oh, okay, all right. So that's just a deal that we pay because we're on their, their property, most of those. They don't give us that free, huh?
Good idea.
Yeah. Can I ask another one?
Sure.
54, 56, we talked about this once. I got to go back and talk. I put a pencil to it, and I can't come up with your figures.
54, 56?
Capital projects, vehicles and equipment, lease purchase, police vehicles. We bought three of them, 60,000 apiece, correct? Give or take a few dollars.
Well, it's police vehicles and equipment. There's a truck and an excavator.
Okay. So if I add that in there, 60, 60, 60 is 180, and then the truck, which was making around 200, and then the excavator would make it another 225 or whatever?
I'm thinking it's more, it's not 45, 49.
It's not 60.
What's not 60?
The police vehicles.
Right, so let's go 50.
They're about 45, yeah. Let's use real numbers. I'll calculate it. But we have, I mean, we can show all the, we can show this, if you want us to scan it and send it to you.
See, that's 9,000 vehicles, that's 27,000, then you still had a truck and everything in there. I just want to make sure that's the right figure, it seems low. I'm, you know, we talked about this the other day.
And we checked it.
And that's just the three vehicle, the three vehicles, and then you add the truck and the excavator, it just seems low. So my question is back again, I want to ask that somebody check those numbers, plus if it's somewhere else, if it's broken out, like if the...
It's not, it's, I mean, and we have a, we have a debt sheet for all of our lease purchases, and so...
Why don't I send it to him Friday? I'll send it to everybody Friday.
It just seems low on the, just on that one, it just seems really low.
Actually, that's the one that I had caught too, because the figures didn't add, but I think the 90 and the 28 should equal to 119, right? But, and that, because if, because there's two subtotals there. So if you add the two subtotal figures, I think it equals a 119, so it's a wash. I mean, so it's...
You're right. I think what, what we're getting at, the 07, 6707, which says lease purchase, police vehicles, technically, we just don't have enough room right there. It's police vehicles and an excavator and a truck. That excavator cost approximately, I don't remember.
It was just under 47, I think.
Okay, so you've got like 47 plus the truck at what, 20? I don't remember.
Probably 27.
27, and then your 45, 45, 45 over a five year, so our debt payment is 28, 462 annually.
If I add that up and divide it by five, I'm into 30s, not the 28s. See, that's where my math doesn't come through.
We'll, we'll show it on the debt sheet.
Yeah.
It's exact.
I have a question on the demolish, demolishing the houses line item, dilapidated property, I'm not sure that is. Okay, so three of the houses, they're going to do themselves. The owner says they're going to do this this year. So is that going to allow us to move to three new properties?
Which we have.
Down the line?
What we do is, we give notice, and then whenever they respond, they may say, you know what, I'd rather just handle it. So as one says, we'll handle it, we add another.
Right.
And we just keep going until we do speak the...
And do we inspect to see they actually did it, rather than say, oh yeah, well?
Absolutely. And then if they don't, then we have one of those, currently we're working on.
Yes.
On the general government, on the computers, you've got about $11,000 difference from one year to this year. Is there, are we getting it paid off, or?
We have 10,000 on the proposed budget, but you had 21 last year, that's kind of, kind of a big jump.
10,000 of it moved to debt service because we're lease purchasing.
Okay.
So that's why we moved it.
That's, so you've got part there and...
And you'll see it under 54, under 54.
Right, I did see that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think a lot of what Kim has done is cleaned up transparency in the line items. So, for example, like on code enforcement, we wanted to split out weed abatement versus demolitions, or we wanted to be more transparent on where things go. So you might see, for example, we only have a certain amount of numbers, so sometimes, remember that when you're looking at a line item and it says 6318, last year it may have had a different name. The name is what's important to us, not, not the number. I want to be clear on that.
Yeah, because on codes, like, for example, on code compliance, you had 8,000 where you didn't have anything in the budget, but then under general fund, you had a weed abatement and being four.
Are you talking about revenue or under code?
Code compliance department 01-0551, services and charges.
Weed abatement. We separated the line item, so we added, so you'll see last year, for example, it was just 30,000 under dilapidated buildings, but technically, that was dilapidated buildings and weed abatement, just in one line item. It was never clear, I wanted to make it...
I've got a question related to that on the weed abatement. I know that when I talked to the county a couple of years ago, they do the auction, and basically, property that's, was it five years, I think, something like that, then they put up for auction. Now, it's our job, and something that we hadn't done for a number of years, but we started doing it a few years ago, is you have to put a lien on that reflective of all the weed abatement at that point, you got to keep up with that. And have we thought, I know we had to kind of change, Wanda's left, and, you know, Kim, is this something we're thinking about, is that we're going, working with the county and making sure we got the liens on there so we can...
We currently file liens on all those properties. Now, we've got...
Does it go to the county and do we...
We're not the first lien, we're not the second lien, I don't think we're the third lien. We're, we're always down the, down the list on liens, but we do file liens now. I think we've been doing so three years. Yes.
Okay. So we get that as a reflection of when they do, when they sell that in auction?
If and when.
If we, if there is enough money that we'll get something out of it.
But we're not usually, we're not first.
First.
Did you do something different on animal control on their vehicle maintenance? Because you don't have anything for, they have a vehicle, so I'm assuming.
They have two of them. But there's nothing under it for maintenance, so...
They're going to do it themselves. We're going to, we're going to have volunteers come in.
I thought they were pulling, I thought they were doing their maintenance supplement on their line. I was going to say, I think if you look under police administration...
Oh, okay. Because...
But as long as somebody...
We think about them.
Under police administration, they...
It's another one we should wrong clean out.
There's a line item that, for 50,000, and I think that covers that entirely.
Okay, okay, that's helpful.
Last year, we forgot to get on fuel. They're going to have to walk. We were going to get on horses.
Susie can push.
Push.
01-0220, years. Can we do an executive session next meeting?
Four.
You, I don't think it's protected in a very executive session unless it has to do...
Sure.
Oh, well, that's already a signed contract.
You want to discuss it here or executive session?
Well, I need Randall to tell me if I, I don't know if y'all can, because you already have a signed contract with my salary.
He's not here.
You have a two-year, you have an extension.
Okay, what's the topic?
My salary.
But here's the deal, last year, we learned that we can only do one-year contracts with city council, so we were in error to do you a two-year contract. You taught us that because Trey gave you a three-year contract, and we had to go back, and you didn't abide by that, so now, we made the same mistake again and gave you a two-year contract.
No, you, you can sign agreements for employment for longer than one year. It's approved every year in the budget. So it's, no, it's, you can.
I request the executive session.
Okay.
Next meeting, please.
Okay, fire suppression, I'm watching on that.
09.
09, 09, 90.
Yes.
Volunteer fire, there's nothing proposed on that, where we had 12,000. And then on their replacements, they don't have any replacements for nozzle, hoses, well, don't they worry.
We go line by line through this budget, and what the chief had requested, they have, they also have county money that they use for some equipment, so they can use county money for quite a bit of this. They've seen an increase in the county money, so our position is to use our county money prior to hitting the general fund. And right now, he has backups on nozzle replacements, he already has an inventory, so he didn't anticipate buying, and he had a virtual fund. As the volunteer fire, I had proposed that last year. I will tell you, that was met with a great deal of resistance.
You still have...
Really. At councils' wish, I'd be happy to put it back in there. It was one item that their, the fire department...
They don't want that at all, do they?
Greatly opposes.
Who, the fire department opposes?
I'm going to say the union, I'm sorry, I shouldn't...
The union.
Oh, the union.
But we're one of the only ones around, basically, in almost any place that doesn't have volunteers.
Agreed.
And we have a lot of city employees that go to other cities to be on their volunteer fire department.
Agreed.
Some are chiefs and whatever else. And this would be a very good potential employee pool to receive their training when we need to hire firemen that are from this area that...
It would wash some of the overtime, so if you look at it from not as a straight expense of 12,000, because right now, their overtime budget is pretty high, and as you can see, they, we budgeted 35,000, they're at 63,000. That has its own issues in it, basically, on the contract, such as when someone calls back, the individuals that are calling back to come work are highest paid employees, and so therefore, your overtime is having a very difficult time. Bringing in volunteers won't solve overtime issues. We hope that hiring of the two paramedics will solve overtime issues, but I would say that I think it would at least wash that 12,000. It is a, it is not a popular topic in our, in our department.
Is it pursuant, I mean, is it...
It is, it is the management right under contract for the city manager to issue a directive for volunteers.
Do we want to talk about that?
I don't know, I don't want to open up a can of worms, I was just going through the budget, that's all I was doing.
We need to put that on the agenda sometime, or, I mean, I...
Happy to talk to you about it.
I mean, that's just one of those things that, maybe we can get a chief in here to talk, tell us all the bad things about it.
I'm replacing them.
I think it'd be good to have the chief talk.
I guess my question is, if you've got volunteers and they're not already trained, and you send them out, and they go to work on a fire, what's our liability there? If they're not trained and don't have bunker suits and all that stuff, what do we do?
We require...
Volunteers do.
They're required by law to have that.
Are they required to have some basic training?
Yes.
Well, thank goodness.
Yes.
I couldn't imagine.
They're also in the pension system, the state has some rules on volunteer, and so they're required for training, continuing education, I mean, they're, they're normal training.
So they, they're in effect firefighters, but not...
Not paid.
Not on our payroll.
Right. What most cities do is pay per call back, so for example, or pay per volunteer time, so whatever that number is, $25, $30, or something. So that's what the 12,000 does, bunker gear and small pay, and pension. And that's what, 12,000 would yield about three or four volunteers. It's not, you know, it's not a whole lot, but it's three or four. And on those grass fires, I believe it'd be advantageous to the city to be able to relieve fire boots on the ground for, for a period of time.
And out of the 13 fire departments, they're all volunteers except for one chief and our city people.
Right.
So they all have their own trucks, their own equipment, their own everything.
In the county.
Yeah. All of them, that are 12.
I guess I was thinking that it was opening up to people, they just want to be, and I was...
Yeah, if anybody wants to be, but they got to try.
I have drafted and gone and visited other cities, I've drafted an application process, an entire program for it, that I think would alleviate those concerns.
I sure think that's something that we certainly don't want to open ourselves up to, liability.
Next, cemetery care. You've got on expenditures, nothing for buildings and grounds.
That is correct.
Okay, is that right?
Where does that come from?
That cemetery, it's, that is dedicated, I need to, and Jay said they just put anything in there.
That's for your building, of the cemetery.
Okay. And there wasn't anything on tent burial supplies or any of that stuff?
I think we bought that this year.
So that's good.
New town.
Okay. Council is here. Any revenues left over? At this point, you said that the council approved, you give that to the, basically, to add it to the month for this and money for the...
Your budget adopted last year dedicated downtown improvements as an expenditure. When you have, when you say money left over, your stabilization fund is an ordinance by which takes precedence.
Now, talking about stabilization, on our last...
Fund balance? Is that what you're talking about, fund balance?
Last year, we had about 150,000 in sales tax revenue left over at the end of the year. Now, we bought things for the city, we did things. This year, we're going to have around 140,000 on the sales tax that's above and beyond, that's left over. So your response to me was it was going to the stuff up here on Oklahoma Division?
Your downtown, there's kind of two different things. I think you're talking sales tax and then general government miscellaneous revenues. So let me look at that, it is, so you have your sales tax, we dedicated the gentleman of the road sales tax to...
Right.
Right, so that one...
Everything that was generated there that stays, yes, non-for-profit.
And then in your expenditures, you'll see that on downtown improvements. And then there was miscellaneous income, which was the jam productions, 202,000 that we put into that miscellaneous income, and we haven't necessarily designated yet, we'll see at construction, which I want to do. That bid hasn't come before you yet.
And I understand that, but then the sales tax is going to be left over at the end of the year.
We anticipate.
And we hope to have. What are we going to do with that?
Unfortunately, we don't get...
There's not much, but...[1715.63]
It will come in after we adopt the budget. So you, when you're in these last, the last month, so we anticipate being, I have to look exactly, about 100, I think you're right, 150,000. So we don't necessarily go and dedicate that, that goes into either a budget fund, a fund balance transfer or into the stabilization fund. If you want to expend that, we could talk about that.
Okay, so we can't earmark that to pay off some debt that we know we got out there if that comes in, because...
You could do a budget amendment and use that money for that.
It seems to me it'd be better to pay off those computers, pay off some of those vehicles and get that out of the way.
Are they lease purchases, though?
Yeah.
So what's the line on that, how much, how long do you pay on it before we own it?
Five years.
And is there a balance then that you pay?
No.
A lump sum at the end?
It pays them in full at five.
Okay, will they accept that early payoff?
Or you can use it for downtown improvements. Because you've got such a low interest rate.
Yeah, it's between 1 and 2% over.
Yeah, it's, no, that's almost, when you've got it that low, you almost have to shift away from debt retirement in order to go ahead and do some of the things that you had wanted to do. Because that's a really low interest rate.
Anybody else have anything on the budget? Did you get a chance to look at it, go over it? Nothing else? We'll move on to number five. Discussion regarding Make Guthrie Weird Spotlight.
We just really want to show, kind of show off GTV 20 and what they're doing. And if we just want to roll the video that they did for Make Guthrie Weird, we're pretty proud of it.